We bless you, we honor you, and we praise you, God. And we thank you, Father, for your presence that is with us. And bless each and every person that is in here, and their families, and this community, God. In your name, Jesus Christ, I pray this prayer, amen.
Amen.
So be it, and thank you, God.
Thank you very much. And Councilmember Vaccaro, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
If we salute our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And we now turn to council reports. Councilmember Carr, let's start with you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Yes, and thank you all for being here tonight. I appreciate it. I've had a busy couple of weeks, starting off with the Bethel Church Community Backpack Giveaway. It was a real good turnout. And after that, I went to, I was attending the Lions Club Centennial Celebration. One hundred years Lions have been doing wonderful things for our town and for our people. And I was amazed to find out at the first sponsored Easter egg hunt that they put on in 1922, there was two thousand kids there, 1922, in Fairfield. I didn't think we had that many people. Yeah, who would have thought? Then on the sixth was the National Night Out. I got to travel around the city, meeting and great people and eating great food. I think it's one of my favorite events as a city council member. I really love the National Light Out, Night Out. And then, also, don't forget, we have a couple more left of the Farmer's Market. I've been walking over there on Thursdays, and it's getting better still. Like Councilmember Scott said, later on in the year, they get more in different vegetables and fruits, and you should go down and check that out. It's really good. I attended my first Sooty M. Smith Foundation Scholarship Luncheon with a lot of my colleagues, and it was very nice. I'm a regular attendee at our homeless roundtable meetings that we have Wednesday. If you want to get more community involved in what direction we're going with that, it's a real good meeting. You can find the times on our website, on the Fairfield website. Also, me and Councilmember Scott went to the Veterans of Foreign Wars. They had at Allen Whip Park, it was pretty neat as well. I won a car wash, as a matter of fact, first time I ever won anything.
You won it for twenty dollars.
Well, I usually get outbid, you know? So, for those of you who would like to help make a difference with that homeless, I do want to reiterate that if you go to our website, you can see these meetings that we have. And I want to give a shout out to Samantha and the Fairfield staff. It was really good. They had a panel with actual people that were homeless and are successful in what they do now, including those homeownership. One of our past homeless people is now going to be a doctor, so it's really good to be part of. Also, let's see what else I got. It's been busy, like I said. I hope everyone's enjoying our summer concert series. The next one is September 6th at the County Lawn downtown, and our last one is the September 20th. Summer's almost over. I also had a great turnout at the annual Tomato and Vine Festival. A lot of our colleagues were down there. I loved that event, and I love seeing a lot of my old friends I run into from school. This year, the weather even cooperated, and it was very nice. So, looking forward to that next year. And that's my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Carr. Councilmember Pandoro, your report.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I just, I know Doug just kind of went down the entire calendar.
I went first.
So, that's okay. A lot of us were at those things, too, so I won't have to, I won't repeat myself, but I'll just give highlights to some of the things that I attended and just kind of stood out to me. So, for the FSUSD Back-to-School Resource Fair that happened over at St. Mark's, I wanted just to, it's one of my favorite year events to kick off the school year. You know, so many backpacks are given out, a lot of resources for the students and their families. And thanks to the POA for cooking up all those hot dogs for everybody. We always, it's always much appreciated. But one of the things that I learned while I was walking the booths was that the school district, FSUSD, now has an after-school programming for, at the high schools. So, at Rod, Armio, and I think at Vanden, it's onsite for students after school until 6:00 PM, and they offer tutoring, snacks, and a place to do homework. And you just need to go in and join. There is no registration. So, if students need a place to go after high school, after school, and if they're in high school, they are not offering this extra additional space for them to stay in a safe space to do some homework and hang out. And then, I attended, which Doug did not mention, the Punjabi Women's Cultural Society, Fairfield Tiaan Bash. And I know Councilwoman Williams was there as well, but it was held here at the community center. And if you can imagine that community center, just full of these beautiful women dressed in traditional garb, colorful, bright, joyful. And so, they were celebrating their sisterhood, women empowerment, and community. And they treated us amazing. They even got us onstage, and we did some dancing. And so, it was just great to be with community. We got to try food, we got to shop in the market, like, it was just an amazing afternoon to be with a part of our community that, you know, that really values their culture, and they are very proud of it. And it was just good to share in that with them that afternoon. And so, I wanted to thank them for inviting us to that event. And with the Tomato and Vine Festival, I'll say two things, highlights. I loved that there was a canning demo. The canning demos were amazing, so they taught people how to cut up tomatoes and save them for later, which was really fantastic little activity that was not there before. And then, also, the Youth Commission. The Youth Commission, our Youth Commission had, I'm sorry, Scott, our Youth Commission had a booth there, and it was just great to see our youth out there engaging with community and engaging with other youth. They, I think that was their first time having a booth there, which is really, it was really great to see them there, present. Two meetings coming up. So, tomorrow, there is a North Texas Business Street Association meeting happening at noon at the Chamber of Commerce. And then, tomorrow evening, I'm sorry, Thursday evening, there is a Capsolano JPA meeting. And Capsolano, the Capsolano JPA is our Regional Homeless Committee. And so, that is Thursday at 6:30 in the county building in downtown. And so, it is open to the public, so if anyone is interested in learning about what's going on around the homeless issues going on in our county, in our city, that's a great meeting to go to. And that is all. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Vaccaro, your report, please.
Yeah, thank you. I'm going to keep mine short, since we've been sort of all going to the same thing. But I did attend the Lions Club 100 Anniversary with Councilman Carr, and our city manager was there also, and that was actually a pretty special event. They've always been supportive of the community in many different ways, so it was an honor to be there. Also, a few of us, actually myself and Councilman Pandora and Councilman Carr, were down at Acasa, down in Monterey. And Acasa is part, we, everybody that sits up here represents a sewer district also. We sit on the board there. So, there's a couple of conferences a year. And one thing that we do also is give out scholarships to students that really need it. And that's one thing that I'll definitely miss in the future, is doing that. But it's something that's going to keep on going, so I'm definitely, like I said, it's a really good, it's a good thing to be part of. The other thing is, school is starting. And, you know, I still go into the schools a lot, sort of part of some stuff I do, sort of a side job, I guess you could say, a job in retirement. But, you know, I still work with administrators and teachers, sort of on a mentoring basis. So, one thing I would tell everybody, parents and kids, just be safe out there. Because every time I go to schools, I always look at the kids, and I think about my experiences as a school administrator. And I always worry. I worry about kids, you know, and I worry about safety. So, please, you know, hug your kids and be safe. And the last thing I'm going to say is, Capsolano, what Councilwoman Pandora just said, I'm stepping down from there, but I'm handing it off to Councilman Carr. So, I wanted to thank Doug for being there and, you know, keep it going. So, thank you, and that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Tonis, your report, please.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. We're a very active council. And when you sit at the end, like we do, St. Mark's, check. Farmer's Market, check. Tomato Festival, check. Summer concerts, so we get to running out of things. But, I have one. So, I had the honor of throwing out the first pitch at the Western Regional Baseball Tournament where the Expos played. My friend Lieutenant Jacobson was there with me, and just wanted to tell you a little bit about their seasons. The Expos had a fantastic season. They went 60 and 16. They lost by one run to Texas at the end of the season, and Texas won that regional. Sixty wins tied for the second most in their team history. The Expos finished, the Fairfield Expos finished, 17th in the entire nation. The Expos will host the Regionals again next year for the 11th time, and has hosted every year since 2018. The estimated boost to the local economy for this exceeds $1 million. So, I just wanted to give a shout out to the Expos. It's, if you haven't been to their games, certainly next year, you can join. It's a beautiful facility, and Brad Hanson has been their coach for, I think it's coming up on 49 years, or it's at 49 years. But just wanted to give a shout out to them. And then, the downtown, we've got some new businesses opening. Cedars, if you haven't tried Cedars, it's the, it's the old cigar shop on the corner of Webster and Texas.
Webster.
Yeah, who would have thought? Then on the sixth was the National Night Out. I got to travel around the city, meeting and great people and eating great food. I think it's one of my favorite events as a city council member. I really love the National Night Out. And then also, don't forget, we have a couple more left of the Farmer's Market. I've been walking over there on Thursdays and it's getting better still. Like Councilmember Scott said, later on in the year, they get more in different vegetables and fruits and you should go down and check that out. It's really good. I attended my first Sudi M. Smith Foundation Scholarship Luncheon with a lot of my colleagues and it was very nice. I'm a regular attendee at our homeless roundtable meetings that we have Wednesday. If you want to get more community involved in what direction we're going with that, it's a real good meeting. You can find the times on our website, on the Fairfield website. Also, me and Councilmember Scott went to the Veterans of Foreign Wars. They had at Allen Whip Park. It was pretty neat as well. I won a car wash, as a matter of fact. First time I ever won anything.
You won it for $20.
Well, I usually get outbid, you know? So for those of you who would like to help make a difference with that homeless, I do want to reiterate that if you go to our website, you can see these meetings that we have. And I want to give a shout out to Samantha and the Fairfield staff. It was really good. They had a panel with actual people that were homeless and are successful in what they do now, including those homeownership. One of our past homeless people is now going to be a doctor. So it's really good to be part of. Also, let's see what else I got. It's been busy, like I said. I hope everyone's enjoying our summer concert series. The next one is September 6th at the County Lawn downtown. And our last one is the September 20th. Summer's almost over. I also had a great turnout at the annual Tomato and Vine Festival. A lot of our colleagues were down there. I loved that event and I love seeing a lot of my old friends I run into from school. This year, the weather even cooperated and it was very nice. So looking forward to that next year. And that's my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Carr. Councilmember Pandaro, your report.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I just, I know Doug just kind of went down the entire calendar.
I went first.
So that's okay. A lot of us were at those things too. So I won't have to, I won't repeat myself, but I'll just give highlights to some of the things that I attended and just kind of stood out to me. So for the FSUSD Back-to-School Resource Fair that happened over at St. Mark's, I wanted just to, it's one of my favorite year events to kick off the school year. You know, so many backpacks are given out, a lot of resources for the students and their families. And thanks to the POA for cooking up all those hot dogs for everybody. We always, it's always much appreciated. But one of the things that I learned while I was walking the booths was that the school district, FSUSD, now has an after-school programming for, at the high schools. So at Rod, Armio, and I think at Vanden, it's onsite for students after school until 6:00 PM. And they offer tutoring, snacks, and a place to do homework. And you just need to go in and join. There is no registration. So if students need a place to go after high school, after school, and if they're in high school, they are not offering this extra additional space for them to stay in a safe space to do some homework and hang out. And then I attended, which Doug did not mention, the Punjabi Women's Cultural Society, Fairfield Tia and Bash. And I know Councilwoman Williams was there as well, but it was held here at the community center. And if you can imagine that community center, just full of these beautiful women dressed in traditional garb, colorful, bright, joyful. And so they were celebrating their sisterhood, woman empowerment, and community. And they treated us amazing. They even got us on stage and we did some dancing. And so it was just great to be with community. We got to try food. We got to shop in the market. Like, it was just an amazing afternoon to be with a part of our community that, you know, that really values their culture and they are very proud of it. And it was just good to share in that with them that afternoon. And so I wanted to thank them for inviting us to that event. And with the Tomato and Vine Festival, I'll say two things, highlights. I loved that there was a canning demo. The canning demos were amazing. So they taught people how to cut up tomatoes and save them for later, which was really fantastic little activity that was not there before. And then also the Youth Commission. The Youth Commission, our Youth Commission had, I'm sorry, Scott. Our Youth Commission had a booth there. And it was just great to see our youth out there engaging with community and engaging with other youth. I think that was their first time having a booth there, which is really, it was really great to see them there, present. Two meetings coming up. So tomorrow, there is a North Texas Business Street Association meeting happening at noon at the Chamber of Commerce. And then tomorrow evening, I'm sorry, Thursday evening, there is a Capsolano JPA meeting. And Capsolano, the Capsolano JPA is our regional homeless committee. And so that is Thursday at 6:30 in the county building in downtown. And so it is open to the public. So if anyone is interested in learning about what's going on around the homeless issues going on in our county and our city, that's a great meeting to go to. And that is all. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Vaccaro, your report, please.
Yeah, thank you. I'm going to keep mine short since we've been sort of all going to the same thing. But I did attend the Lions Club 100 anniversary with Councilman Carr and our city manager was there also. And that was actually a pretty special event. They've always been supportive of the community in many different ways, so it was an honor to be there. Also, a few of us, actually myself and Councilwoman Pandora and Councilman Carr, were down at Acasa down in Monterey. And Acasa is part, we, everybody that sits up here represents a sewer district also. We sit on the board there. So there's a couple of conferences a year. And one thing that we do also is give out scholarships to students that really need it. And that's one thing that I'll definitely miss in the future is doing that. But it's something that's going to keep on going. So I'm definitely, like I said, it's a really good, it's a good thing to be part of. The other thing is, school is starting. And, you know, I still go into the schools a lot, sort of part of some stuff I do, sort of a side job, I guess you could say, a job in retirement. But, you know, I still work with administrators and teachers sort of on a mentoring basis. So one thing I would tell everybody, parents and kids, just be safe out there. Because every time I go to schools, I always look at the kids and I think about my experiences as a school administrator. And I always worry. I worry about kids, you know, and I worry about safety. So please, you know, hug your kids and be safe. And the last thing I'm going to say is Capsolano, what Councilwoman Pandora just said, I'm stepping down from there, but I'm handing it off to Councilman Carr. So I wanted to thank Doug for being there and, you know, keep it going. So thank you. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Tonis, your report, please.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. We're a very active council. And when you sit at the end, like we do, St. Mark's, check. Farmer's Market, check. Tomato Festival, check. Summer concerts, so we get to running out of things. But I have one. So I had the honor of throwing out the first pitch at the Western Regional Baseball Tournament where the Expos played. And my friend Lieutenant Jacobson was there with me. And just wanted to tell you a little bit about their seasons. The Expos had a fantastic season. They went 60 and 16. They lost by one run to Texas at the end of the season and Texas won that regional. 60 wins tied for the second most in their team history. The Expos finished, the Fairfield Expos finished, 17th in the entire nation. The Expos will host the regionals again next year for the 11th time and has hosted every year since 2018. The estimated boost to the local economy for this exceeds $1 million. So I just wanted to give a shout out to the Expos. It's, if you haven't been to their games, certainly next year, you can join. It's a beautiful facility. And Brad Hanson has been their coach for, I think it's coming up on 49 years or it's at 49 years. But just wanted to give a shout out to them. And then the downtown, we've got some new businesses opening. Cedars, if you haven't tried Cedars, it's the old cigar shop on the corner of Webster and Texas. Their grand opening was a couple weeks ago. Fairfield Bicycle has come downtown. Billy's the owner of that, really good guy. It's right next to Evelyn's. And Fairfield Arts has opened downtown. We've got more restaurants coming. There's a lot happening downtown. So if you haven't been in a while, come check it out. Got some good restaurants and there's some good things happening there. And that's it for me. Thanks, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Williams, your report, please.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Well, there's two that Scotty and I did together. Taste of downtown. Great food, great people, and great company. Thanks for hanging out with me. Also, in my district, District 1, Green Valley, Cordelia, we did a tour of The Producers. I know you see that off the freeway, the Jack-in-the-Box exit. And I've always wanted to go in there. And so we were able to tour and see milk being produced and ask them all sorts of questions about distribution. And just so you know, if you want some really super fresh milk, they deliver to Costco, one of their biggest clients. So you literally can go to Green Valley Costco and drink milk that was produced just a few miles away, which I think is pretty cool. Actually, you had a cool thing that you liked about The Producers surrounding the, do you remember?
Well, the coffee that they let us try that they serve at Dutch Brothers.
Yeah. And also, I think you liked that it was more hydrating than water.
Yeah, the milk was.
Right. So I thought that was pretty cool, too. But two other, three other quick things. I also did a tour of El Florido. I hope I'm not saying that wrong. The Olive Oil Company that's in Sassoon Valley. So I was there for a few hours and the owner took me on a tour of her farm. And I got to taste stuff that I don't eat and really, really love, from cucumbers to figs, all the stuff that I normally wouldn't eat, but I didn't want to say being polite and not try it. So now I love this stuff. But such an amazing business where you can eat and go on tours and spend time with family, spend time by yourself. It's just an amazing, magical place and it's right here in Sassoon Valley. Two other quick things. National Night Out, this is the first time that I've ever attended National Night Out as a city council person. I've gone before, just dropped, you know, to a few locations. But as a city council person, it is pretty amazing. You go as a team with the police department and police volunteers and staff and go to, and I get to go to every place in my district. And I'm always convinced when I'm hanging out in my district, no offense, guys, I have the best district.
Wow.
I'm convinced, I'm sure of it. And then finally, I want to tell you one last thing. And that is that I was invited to a innovation roundtable. Menveer Sandhu organized it. It was surrounding a plug-and-play acceleration hub. And it was pretty amazing. It was Napa and Solano was there. And we were talking about industry verticals and how to lift Solano and Napa together and accelerate businesses that are in those verticals. And Vacaville Economic Development was there. Napa Chamber was there. Solano EDC was there. Solano Workforce Development was there. Solano Small Business Development was there. So it was pretty powerful. That was just the first meeting and hope to report on further meetings in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will keep my report brief as well to avoid repeating things. I want to, first of all, give a big shout out and thanks to Chief Sturdy and Fire Marshal Stephen Conti for helping us get our first fire health and safety annual event underway. We had that at Rolling Hills Elementary School. We were very privileged to receive a ton of information about how we as residents can play our part in helping to prevent, you know, fires from even starting. And also, prevention is worth a pound of cure. And we got, I had a really good discussion and we had many handouts that are available with critical information. If you would like to receive that information, you can contact me directly, pbertani@fairfield.ca.gov for a PDF of all of the handouts. And I'm going to say, I don't see Fire Marshal Conti here, so you can contact him as well, probably. And he'll have that information for you as well. National Night Out was fabulous. Kate Patrice, I will take issue with your district being the best. Okay, we had some great stuff in Rolling Hills and Paradise Valley and Rancho and all over the city of Fairfield. So thank you, everyone who participated in National Night Out. It's always fun to get to hang out with our residents and our police officers who escort us around. And it's just, it's just a good old time. So thank you for that. I attended the Travis Air Force Base Block Party last Tuesday as a member of the Fairfield Clergy Action Network, and that was fantastic. Travis always does a great block party, inviting members of the faith community to come onto base to have, to have, you know, present, not presentations, but to have booths where you can collect information from all of the participating members of the faith community. And this event is great because it kind of brings the faith community to Travis Air Force Base. So that Travis Air Force Base men and women who want to have an experience beyond the chapel experience there can know what churches are around and what, you know, I mean, what the churches are doing and the participation in the community. So that was a great event. And I'm very, very thankful for all of the work and effort that Travis put into having that event. And the Clergy Action Network will be having an ice cream social this, well, on Tuesday, the 27th of August from 3:00 to 4:30 at the Fairfield Community Center, 1,000 Kentucky Street. And all of Can's events, you can look at our website at fairfieldclergyactionnetwork.com. Everything is there and the invitation is open for you to be there. And also, I want to give a special shout out to Jeff Traeger for our Rolling Hills Music in the Park night. I spoke to Jeff right before this meeting started. And I just want you to know, anytime you want to come back to the Rolling Hills Neighborhood Park, you're cordially invited. Our residents turned out there real nice and are in love with that venue, which is kind of like an amphitheater in a way with all of the trees around. So the music was great, the programming was great, the sound was great, and the community fellowship was great as well. So I'm going to stop my report right there and ask the city manager for your report, please, sir.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Just one update. We've put out messaging, hopefully folks have seen it, but just as a reminder, tomorrow we go live with our new MyFMU Fairfield Municipal Utility Software Portal for our water customers. So the, sort of the big upshot there is if you are signed up as a customer for auto pay, where you just automatically have a deduction out of your checking account, you will need to re-sign up for that service. Because as we've switched the customer portal service software system from the old system to the new MyFMU SilverBlaze, anybody doing the ACH transfer or checking account transfer will need to re-sign up. So that goes live tomorrow, so just a reminder to do that. And you can find more information at fairfield.ca.gov/MyFMU. Takes you right to our page with all of the information on that. That's my only update item. And Madam Vice Mayor, we will need to pull item number 18 off of the agenda for this evening. That'll come back at a future meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, your report, please.
I have nothing to report. Thank you.
All right. And Madam Clerk, your report, please.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Just I wanted to thank a few groups that have adopted streets recently. Realtors Sophie Reisner and Yvonne Ivio. I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing that. They each adopted a street in Green Valley. And then the Air Force Sergeants Association, Chapter 1320 from Travis, adopted a section of airbase Parkway. So I thank all of them for participating in our program. Thank you.
Very nice. And thank you for all of your hard work on that program. It is just getting, growing by leaps and bounds.
Oh, and one other thing I forgot. We do have a trash mob this Saturday, August 24th in Cordelia. It's going to be across from the AMPM store at 105 Lopes Road and 9:00 to 11:00 AM. If any students need community service hours for school, you're more than welcome. You can reach out and call me. Just look up Karen Reese or Adopt a Street, Google it, and you'll come up with my contact information. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. And we now turn to presentations. Madam Clerk, if you would, please.
Yes. Presentation one, Legislative Update by Anna Giles, our Assistant to the City Manager.
Good evening, Council. Tonight, I am pleased to be joined by Jason Goncalves. Our lobbyists from Goncalves &amp; Son provide a legislative update. As you may remember, back in February, you adopted your legislative platform for the year. And tonight's presentation serves as an update of our legislative activities since then. A few key dates from this year. In January, the legislature reconvened for the second year of a two-year cycle. And then spring was spent primarily with the legislature introducing bills and initial analysis. Then there was a deadline in May for the bills to pass from the house they were introduced in to the house, to the next house. And that's really a key date for us in our office because those are the bills that really have legs and we need to pay attention to and submit position letters. Then in June, the state adopted their budget for the year. And that's just in time for them to go on recess for the summer and then reconvene in August, which is where we are right now, for a final mad dash sprint to adopt bills and get them onto the governor's desk where he then has until September 30th to sign or veto any bills. A few snapshot of the efforts we've had this year. In April, myself, our city manager, and a number of you traveled to Sacramento for Cal City's Leader Summit Day. That's a great two and a half, three-day event where we have an opportunity to meet with our state representatives and lobby and advocate for the needs of Fairfield. This year, the bulk of our advocacy work with our representatives focused around homeless funding and in particular, funding for Capsolano for staffing and helping build that organizational capacity so we can respond as an entire county in regards to homelessness. In April, you also received a very comprehensive presentation from the Solano County Water Board about the proposed Bay Delta Plan and the Recommended Alternative Healthy River and Landscape Program. We did a lot of communication around that after the presentation since it would have significant impacts on the community. We built out the webpage, fairfield.ca.gov/baydeltaplan. We outlined the presentation and listed a number of resources as well as a template letter that residents would be able to sign and send to their representatives as well, stating their opposition against the proposed plan. We were also early adopters of taking opposition against the Taxpayer Protection and Government Accountability Act. If this had ended up on the November ballot, which it's not, but if it had and had passed, it would have significantly impacted the way cities and local agencies would be able to raise revenue for fundamental city services. And so fortunately, this is not on the November ballot this year and our opposition was heard. Finally, we also met regularly with Senator Dodd and Assembly Member Wilson throughout the year to advocate for city needs. We have very strong relationships with both of those offices and we appreciate their willingness to always take meetings with us and hear our concerns. On the federal level, we continue to build our relationship with Congressman Garamendi, who has always been very favorable to Fairfield and hears our needs and advocates for us at a federal level. And we've submitted funding requests to his office for key capital improvement projects. And then also this year, we continue to build our relationship with Senator Padilla's office. We had a meeting with his staff in December and then again in the spring to really let them know what's important to our community and building those relationships with his office. So we're very fortunate here in Fairfield to have good relationships at both the state and federal level with our representatives. And so with that, I'm going to invite Jason up, who will be able to get into more detail about the trends of the bills that we saw this year, the state budget, and what to expect in these final weeks of the legislative cycle.
Thank you, Anna. And good evening, Madam Vice Mayor, members of the council. As Anna mentioned, I'm Jason Goncalves with the lobbying firm Joey Goncalves &amp; Son. We've had the privilege of representing the city dating back to when I didn't have white or gray hair. So it's been a long relationship and a privilege and honor to work with each and every one of you. As Anna mentioned, the legislature returned August 5th for the mad dash, I think Anna appropriately characterized it as, for the final 30 days of session. We're in the second year of a two-year session, so August 31st is signee die. And the upside is, that means constitutionally, they have to adjourn. The damage is done. But it is, they can't go past midnight on August 31st with ordinary legislation as they could in the odd number of years like last session. The legislature returned on August 5th with 1,350 bills to pass in that three and a half week window. Last Friday, August 16th, was the Appropriations Committee deadline. They heard in the Senate 515 bills and 315 in the Assembly. The reason being is the Assembly bills, there's more in the Senate now because there's twice as many Assembly members. They held about four, I'm sorry, 250 of those bills, about 30%. In large part because of the budget deficit, the Appropriations Committee is looking at potential costs to the state. And also given, you know, the second house is a little bit of a tougher hurdle for members coming out of the fiscal committee. But, you know, the pendulum has swung, as we all know far too well, from a $100 billion plus surplus to 68, $70 billion deficit. That, the good news is revenues have begun trending this fiscal year higher than projected. So there is potentially some upside on the budget horizon. So we have about 1,000 bills left, again, to get through by August 31st. It's always a pressure cooker this month in Sacramento. It's had a interesting, once saw that coming, correct? We will have a number of legislators back in Chicago this week for the DNC. So a lot of this week, I say a number, 20-plus legislators with passes, who knows how many go without passes, will be in, I'm sorry, in Chicago. Which means next week and leading into the Labor Day weekend is going to be that much more intense. And they will spend every bit of that Saturday, August 31st, in Sacramento trying to get through those bills. The trend has, in the last session, and carried over, housing bills. And unfortunately, we see an increasing number of housing proposals seeking to circumvent your local land use authority. But housing had a little bit of the wind taken away from it this year with public safety. And, you know, public safety's received statewide, if not national, news in California. And the California District Attorneys Association had qualified or collected enough signatures and now ultimately it will be Prop 36 qualified for the November ballot. That created a lot of, generated a lot of attention from the governor on down and legislative leadership. There were a number of folks that did not want to amend Prop 47. So leading up to July recess, the deadline for the Secretary of State to get ballots, there were negotiations and efforts to first put in the retail theft package, which is a bipartisan proposal of 10 bills, to put language in the bills that were amended in that said, if the voters pass Prop 36, the 10 bills become inoperative, kind of leverage the Prop 36 proponents. That wasn't getting a lot of support, in large part through the majority party, the Democratic caucuses in both houses. So just before summer recess, there was a discussion and effort to put an alternative initiative on the ballot. That, too, was met with quite a bit of resistance statewide, district attorneys, law enforcement groups, and the like. So where So where we stand today, I guess the, the long and short of it is, the retail theft package was signed last Friday by the governor. The legislature returned, it did pass the 10 bills. And then, Prop 36 will be before the voters, which will be additional enhancements for, and it takes a little bit larger step than just retail theft. It also deals with drugs dealing and, and also diversion programs for, you know, drug addiction and drug treatment, as determined by the courts. So, public safety, we think, has at least been resolved and will be up to the voters in November. The November election, we will have all 80 legislative, Assemblymembers on the ballot. 20 of the 40 senators will be on the ballot. So, coupled with 2022, where we had 37 new legislators, this year, we will see 35 new legislators, a new state senator for your city. So we'll have 72 members in January that will have served two years or less in the legislature, about two-thirds of the legislature. It simply states that we have our work to do, we'll have to build relationships. I've known what it's likely to be, Senator Dodd's successor for longer than either of us will want to admit, but since his West Sacramento days, and so presumably, if it's Christopher Cabaldin, we will hit the ground running and, and get Fairfield in front of the new senator. Assemblymember Wilson has been fantastic to work with. She hit the ground running would be an understatement. She's become a powerhouse in Sacramento and really wants to do what's right for her district. And Senator Dodd has been incredible to work with, and, you know, 12 years just goes far too quickly, as I think we, we all know. So I will stop there. I'm happy to answer any questions. And on a personal note, I want to thank you all for your service. Our family got involved in politics at the local level, and want to thank Councilmember Ricardo for his service. He, he mentioned 16 years before the meeting, and time flies, and we're having fun, but it's, it's been a privilege and honor. Again, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Colleagues, any questions while we have Jason or Anna here? Councilmember Carr, do you have something?
Oh, not at this time.
Okay. Anyone? Okay. Thank you. Both. Great report. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And Presentation Number Two, Anna's up again.
Good evening, Council. I am so happy to be here for Part Two, or the second presentation. Let me close out the legislation. So, good evening, Council. I am happy to be here to present to you on our Sister City program. Since 1971, the city of Fairfield has had a very strong relationship with the city of Nierisaki, Japan, as our sister city. And in 1989, 35 years ago, we sent our first delegation of students from Fairfield to Nierisaki to visit. And ever since then, we have maintained a very robust student exchange program. This past December, we welcomed students from Nierisaki for the first time since the pandemic in 2020. And then, I'm excited to say that this summer was the first time since 2020, really 2019, that we had sent students to Nierisaki, and they were warmly received by our sister city. And we are back full swing into this annual exchange program between students. This program, it's a vital part of our sister city relationship, and it allows our young citizens to build lifelong friendships and memories and experience a world not just outside of Fairfield, but also the United States. They go to Nierisaki to serve as delegates to Fairfield and to learn about other cultures. So tonight, I am joined by the students who traveled to Nierisaki, and I'm going to invite two of our students, Nicholas and Philip, up. You guys can come on up. And they're going to spend a few minutes talking about their experience, and then we'll have a slideshow going as well, so you can see some photos from their trip. So either of you can go first.
Hello, I'm Nicholas, and I'm so sad that I have to condense this amazing trip into like, three minutes or just a couple of minutes, but I was blessed enough and fortunate enough to go on my first trip outside of this country, and my first trip so far away from home without my family for such a long period of time. And I had the best time of my life on this trip. Honestly, I fully recommend this trip. This, this was the greatest experience I think I've ever had, and I will cherish it forever. Everywhere we went, everyone was so nice to us. They, it's like, they wanted us to be there, they wanted to get to know us. They, they loved us, like, even though we didn't really know each other like that. And the food, of course, is there, I'm just going to get that out of the way. The food was amazing. I gained six pounds while I was over there. But I, I was blessed enough to have such an amazing host family, and I'm even more fortunate enough that my host brother will be joining me this next exchange, which will be awesome, because I just, I love my host family so much, you know? That was, I think, the greatest thing ever. But going around and learning about all these, all these clubs, their schools, the differences between all of us, we're all the same, but there's just these subtle differences that make us so different culturally, and I, I love these. I love these subtle differences, like, the tea ceremonies, we don't, we don't do that. We set the table, we don't do tea ceremonies, but that was incredible to learn about. Kendo, that was awesome. I had to hit a guy with a stick. That was kind of weird, because he kept asking me to, like, actually hit him, and I'm like, I don't want to hit you, but I had to, so there's me swinging on him. But, all in all, this, this trip, I loved it, and I really wish I could go back. And I, I really wish we could have stayed longer, but I, I was so blessed to be on this trip. I'd like to thank the city for keeping this program alive. I'd like to thank Anna for doing all the heavy lifting, as well as Brian, who had to be settled with us for about three weeks. So that was amazing. And yeah, that was, that's, that's pretty much it. I mean, do it. I seriously recommend this trip. I mean, if you got a kid, go ahead and send him on the trip.
My name is Philip Lee, and I'm really excited to be here. So, just wanted to say it's an honor to represent Fairfield on the Sister City Exchange Program to Japan. It's a really exciting opportunity, and I just wanted to go over a few things that I enjoyed about this program. I think the best thing about this is, it definitely gives you the opportunity to immerse in a culture that you wouldn't necessarily get the opportunity for, per saying, like, a typical, like, trip, if I was just going to go to Japan, go to Tokyo, visit a couple tourist sites, because on this one, we got to visit schools, meet people, spend time with host families, and they're all so nice. I mean, I really enjoyed the people. There's some really nice people over there. They, my host family, basically, was just like, it was so fun. They really prioritized hospitality over there. They really take you to wherever you want to go. If you want food, I mean, most, my host family was very into a beef tongue, so we had a lot of that. It was very interesting, yeah. And as apart from that, another thing was, Japan is very beautiful. Like, imagine, like, you see Fairfield, right? We have, but like, the hills, they're, they're green, but they're like, a lot bigger. And it's like, it's like, really, really cool. It's like you're in a national park all over the place, and I really enjoy driving around. We got opportunities to go to places like Fujikyu, it's a big amusement park, roller coasters and stuff like that. That was really fun to do. And, I mean, we got to visit Kyoto, Hiroshima, Tokyo, all the cool places in Japan. It's just a really good opportunity. And also, like, I just want to say that the people in Japan, they really love this program, and they really makes, they really think it's important, and they make sure that we have the best time. You guys should have seen them when we were taking off. They were, like, it was sad, they were, most of them were in tears. I mean, if I ever thought of going to Japan again, I mean, maybe my first stop before this trip, I mean, I probably won't go to some random city called Nierisaki, but I think the next time, if I ever, if my family ever goes to Japan, we'll probably stop by Tokyo, but I got to say hi to some friends, you know? Some really nice people over there. And of course, they're excited to come here. Everyone knows a lot about America, a lot about America. So, yeah, they're really excited. And I'm excited to see my host brother, too. I'm just keeping in contact with him, so I'm excited for that. And, yeah, I just, I'd like to thank a couple people. Thank Anna. Thank you, Brian. He put up with us, and we're just a bunch of teenagers. We like to do a lot of, never mind. Yeah, thank you so much, everybody, and.
So, we are excited to continue the exchange, as both Nicholas and Philip mentioned. They are visiting in December. We are solidifying the dates of when Nierisaki students will be returning to Fairfield. If anybody is interested in learning more about the program, they can visit fairfield.ca.gov/sistercity. You can subscribe to updates as well through that website. Or if you are interested in volunteering, this is a community project. It is very volunteer-driven, and so there is opportunity to stay involved. We also received a lot of support this year, as we revitalized the program and sent students off with the increased cost of airfare and inflation. We received a lot of community donations as well, from Rotary, employee groups, and some individuals within the community as well. That made a big difference, because it is completely self-funded for the students that go to Nierisaki. And so, it is greatly appreciated when the community really wraps theirs, really steps up and helps with the program as well. So a lot of opportunities to engage in the Sister City program. So with that, I would like to invite the students up, as well as Brian, who was our chaperone this year. He's a City of Fairfield employee. He was a host parent in December, and then went this year to Nierisaki to service the chaperone. He was an amazing chaperone. And so with that, we have certificates for each of the students, and then, Council can take photos as well. So, Imani Burke. Cortland Jacobson. Philip Lee. Miranda Torres-Lopez. Nicholas James Singh. And Haley Whitehead. So if you guys would like to come to the front and we'll take some photos, our city clerk can take photos, parents can take photos, and then, Council, if you'd like to stand.
And while we're arranging for the photos, let me just say that I'm sure that all of us up here are very proud to have such a well-representation of the city of Fairfield. You're quite the ambassadors indeed, so thank you for representing the city so very well, and keep up the awesome, great work. Very well done.
I'd like to have you all stand closer to this.
We won't bite you, come on. Come on back.
Otherwise, you're blocking all of them.
There we go. Perfect.
The Reese, come this way a little. Rick, you got to go that way a little. Okay, everyone. Look and smile. I'll take a few. Thank you.
All right, another round of applause for these wonderful students. Thank you so much.
Madam Vice Mayor, will you indulge me for a minute?
Absolutely, Mr. City Attorney.
So, as you know, I very rarely say anything from this dais, because I defer to the council on all matters and only advise you legally.
Which is why we're all shaking right now.
I have to share a story to these young student ambassadors. Sister City program is something very near and dear to my heart, because in 1989, when I was a high school student, I was a student ambassador to Japan from my home city of Montebello.
Aww.
And I went to the city of Oshia. And I want to tell all of you who went that it really is an incredible experience. And the beauty of the experience, you all probably know the history, but maybe your parents don't know, or the people at Fairfield don't know, this program was designed by President Eisenhower in the aftermath of World War II.
Wow.
To improve relations between the countries of America and Japan, to make sure that that sort of conflict never happened again between our two countries. And it is today one of the most successful Sister City programs nationwide between cities in America and cities in Japan. And you are a testament to that, I'm a testament to that. I went well before you were born, but the impact of that exchange program has never left me. And the beauty of the exchange program that I can tell you is that it changes your worldview. And you don't have to do anything from this point on. You don't have to do any more studying, you don't ever have to think about it again. It is just an experience which will never leave you. And your worldview will expand, you're going to take all the wonderful things about Fairfield and take that out into the world and share it with the friendship and the joy that you learned in Japan. And you're going to think bigger, you're going to do bigger. And one of the things that I'll tell you, the reason I'm so moved, especially now, is I got a chance to go back to Japan with my family last October, and I met one of my host sisters. We've stayed in touch all these years, we're both in our 50s now. She is now the interpreter, the Japanese interpreter for the US Ambassador to the United States. She works in the US Embassy, and I got to go meet her when she was in Tokyo, and all we talked about that evening was our time as Sister City ambassadors. When I stayed at her house, she came to Montebello, stayed at my house. So you've been given a wonderful gift, and you have these wonderful people up here on this dais to thank you for that. But we hope that you will, you know, move that gift forward, and the beauty is, you do not have to do anything. Just live your lives with a memory of the wonderful time you had. Never lose those memories, never lose that feeling of diversity, inclusiveness, and knowing that in this world, we, as you said, young man, we are all really the same. So, congratulations, and, you know, it is a lifelong gift. I really mean that sincerely. So, congratulations.
Well said, Mr. City Attorney. Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Very well done and very moving indeed. And we now turn to public comment. Madam Clerk?
Yes. Persons wishing to address the City Council on subjects not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the Council may do so at this time. The Council cannot discuss or take action on matters not on the agenda for this meeting, but Council members may briefly respond to statements made or questions raised by the public, ask for clarification from staff, refer the matter to staff, request staff to report back to the Council at a subsequent meeting, or place the matter on a future agenda. To speak on an agenda item if you're online, please use the Raise Your Hand feature or press star nine on your phone. Speakers are limited to three minutes per item. And our first speaker is Jeff Traeger.
Good evening, Jeff Traeger. Come on up and give us the good news.
Madam Vice Mayor, Madam Mayor, wherever you are, members of the City Council, this is what's going on at the Downtown Theater in the next couple of months. On the 18th of October through the 31st is the Rocky Horror Show. And then, on the 15th of November is Suzie Call Jr. Those are, we're going to have shows all the way through into Christmas, the O'Neal's Children's Choir is coming back in December with, with another great show. They, they love this theater, they think it's a wonderful, you know, this is a group that travels all over the world, and one of the places that they, they insist on playing is at the Downtown Theater. So we're, and I'm just very happy to be able to present them. Thanks again, as far as, thank you for, Madam Vice Mayor, coming out to Rolling Hills for one of our shows. It's starting to pick up, we must have had close to 200 people, also at Vintage Green, Vintage Valley Green Park, and we just, and we just finished bringing reggae out to Hillview Park. So we're giving a little bit of everything for, for each park, and, and people just are really eating it up, and I, I think it's coming along very well. On a personal note, not personal, what the heck, I have a show coming up September 6th on Mare Island, the Sedaka Bay, it's our fourth year. I'm going to tell you about it, because one of the performers lives in Fairfield, his name is Lenny Williams. Lenny Williams, one of the great, class of the great soul singers. Lenny lives, has lived in Green Valley for a number of years. But not only is Lenny going to be performing, Lenny was, of course, the lead singer with Tower Power for many years, but the Commodores, Average White Band, and Heatwave are also performing. That's September 6th, there's, there'll be information all over the place. And on a sad note, Fairfield lost, I haven't been here in a while, but we lost And on a sad note, Fairfield lost, I haven't been here in a while, but we lost one of our favorite citizens. His name was Orlando Cepeda. And I can't tell you how much, he was a loved, he was not only just a great baseball player, but he was a great human being. And every time he was needed to, you know, throw the first pitch out for a neighborhood, for events in this area, he would do it. And you could always, you could always approach Orlando, either it's sticky rice or 260, and he was always gracious enough to make you feel comfortable. And he was a unique human being, and we really lost a great person. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Hold on, Jeff? Jeff, September 6th is a Friday. Sedaka Bay is on a Friday?
Saturday.
That's the 7th, okay.
So, Sedaka Bay is on the 7th, Saturday the 7th. Okay.
Oh, yeah. But the night before, I have a show at Allen Witt Park.
All right.
I'm sorry, it got moved. Okay, so that's our next show. That's at Allen Witt Park on the 6th of September.
Okay.
I got it.
Thank you, Jeff. Appreciate you, sir, as always.
Our next speaker is John Takiuchi.
Good evening, Mr. Takiuchi.
Yeah, good evening, Vice Mayor. Good evening, everybody. Just real quick, I live over in Round Hill West, and you know, right next to me is the Waterman Highlands, and they're in the CFD. And some time ago, you shut the water off, you know, for that ivy-covered slope right across from the Safeway. The ivy, the ivy's not dying. Like most plants, what it's doing is surrendering its leaves. They're all, they're turning brown, and it's an eyesore for one thing, you know, there's a lot of communities that travel Waterman Boulevard bypassing I-80. But the big thing, my concern, is that it's a fire hazard. When those leaves are dry, this time of year especially, it's a fire hazard. And the city's going to be, you know, we're going to be responsible for that. So, please do something about it. If you're gonna, if you're just gonna clear the leaves off and throw bark on it, that's fine too, you know, whatever you, but don't leave the leaves there, you know, for the whole season. Okay, that's all I wanted to tell you. Thank you. I got a date, I gotta run.
All right, have a nice day, sir. Looking great. Thank you.
Did anyone else want, wish to speak on public comment?
Anyone else for public comment? All right.
And there are no hands raised online. You're item 21, sir.
Okay. And now we turn to the consent calendar. Madam Clerk?
All matters listed on the consent calendar are to be approved with one motion unless a member of the City Council or the public requests that separate action be taken on a specific item.
All right, do we have any speakers for any of the consent calendar items? It does not appear that we do?
No.
So, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar as amended with removing item 18.
So, I'm moved.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Carries unanimously. Thank you very much. And now we turn to new business, item 19.
Item 19. Resolution 2024-212 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield authorizing the Fire Department to enter a memorandum of understanding to provide duty chief coverage for the City of Sassoon City. And our presenter is Deputy Fire Chief Rob Herrick. Welcome, Rob.
Hey, Rob. Thank you. Good evening, Vice Mayor, council members, Mr. City Manager. Rob Herrick, Deputy Chief with Fire. I'm here on behalf of Chief John Sturdy tonight, and here to discuss the City of Sassoon Duty Chief Coverage MOU item before you tonight. Have a few just bullet points to go over. First of all, why did they come to us to request this and provide the coverage? Sassoon City Fire, they're struggling with the retention at the battalion chief rank. They currently only have one of the three shifts filled, leaving two shifts without coverage, which they, the chief and the division chief have been sharing that over time. It's not long-term sustainable, and it's wearing them down. How is this mutually beneficial? Sassoon City will receive staffing by our highly-chained Fairfield Command Staff, and Fairfield will receive a fixed fee that's guaranteed compensation for our services. The contract terms, we're going to be charging them $8,000 a month in exchange to cover two of those 48-hour shifts. We will respond to Sassoon City from our internal fire stations, from our city limits. We're going to respond to Sassoon City with the same response criteria that we respond as our battalion chiefs and duty chiefs respond into our own city. If this is approved, it will start on September 1st of 2024, and it'll go through June of '25. And then there's an option for an extension for another year if that's mutually agreed upon by both cities. There won't be any negative impacts on the Fairfield Fire Department or the residents that we serve. We expect this will add about an additional 1.2 calls per day. The average response of our duty chiefs in Sassoon, we're anticipating will be about 29 minutes. Ninety-two percent of the time will be cleared within an hour. We also have a built-in redundancy in the command staff. Monday through Friday during the business hours, there's a training battalion chief, an administrative battalion chief and myself that can provide that backup coverage. And then we always have an ability on nights and weekends to call in extra staffing, which we already do on large types of events. The payments received will augment our current budget. There will be no staffing, equipment, or apparatus changes or increases that are needed to enter into this agreement. And I appreciate your time, and do you have any questions for me?
Thank you very much, Rob. Any questions or comments, colleagues? Councilmember Williams?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So, are there any, like, would, we need to report in for meetings in Sassoon City? Like, is there any other thing that we're not thinking of that would, where we would be extending resources outside of just taking that 1.0, you know, 1.5 calls?
That's a great question. We've had many discussions with our chiefs, with operations, with dispatch. This is purely just to provide that coverage. It's kind of similar to what we did in Cordelia, where we were responding and covering all administration, fire prevention, anything else, policies, procedures, all of that's going to be handled by their chief and their deputy chief. This will literally provide that service to fill in those two shifts.
And you answered the second question. I was wondering if it was similar to what you provided in Cordelia. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Carr?
Yeah, Rob. And the funding that we are receiving for our services, are we breaking even? Are we making any profit? How are we looking on that?
That additional $8,000, so we're not going to have to provide or add any more staffing or anything operational. So, this will be an additional $8,000 revenue coming with no expenses coming out of our pocket.
Okay, thank you, Rob.
Anyone else? All right. Well done. Thank you, sir, for the report. Do we have any public speakers on this item? It appears that we do not. So, I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2024 hyphen 212. All right, we have a motion?
Second.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
That carries unanimously. Thank you. And item 20, please.
Item 20. Discussion and direction on Fairfield Municipal Code Chapter 10E, also known as Commercial Cannabis Business on Program Amendments and Program Operations. And our presenter is Dave Sellers, Director of Community and Economic Development.
Good evening, everyone. I appreciate the opportunity. Am I not, oh, there we go. First time up here. Took 10 months for you guys to get me up here, so no wonder. Well, good evening, Vice Mayor, members of council. So, this evening, I had to request a council member at a prior meeting, and as well as in relation to an economic development opportunity for the city, I'm here to request direction from council on a number of potential changes to the administration of our commercial cannabis program, as well as the city code. And with me this evening as well is Dave Feinstein, who has been the primary staff person administering the code over the last several, or the program, I should say, over the last several years as well. I also want to thank our city attorney, our city manager, and our finance director for their input as we prepare to bring these items to you this evening. So, just briefly, I'll move ahead to begin some background on the commercial cannabis program. For those who may not be familiar, the program goes back to a change in city code in June of 2020. This added Chapter 10E, which spells out how the city approves, licenses, and administers what we call our commercial cannabis program. There were a number of subsequent ordinances throughout 2020 that have set up further structure for that program, and that led to an application window for retail, manufacturing, and laboratory testing businesses for cannabis in the city. After the city navigated itself through that application process into the following year, preliminary approval was granted for four retail cannabis businesses and one manufacturing. And the key phrase there is preliminary approval, which I'll get to as we ask for your further guidance. One other thing to note on the background for the program, for anyone, for the public who's interested in learning more, on the city manager's webpage, there is a tab which includes all the documentation related to the commercial cannabis program from its initial start up through today, all the ordinances and application materials and so forth. Currently, we have three retail cannabis businesses permitted and operating in the city. There are two entities that still have the preliminary approval but have not advanced forward to the permitting and operation stage. Over the past several months, city staff have engaged with some of the retail operators at their request to hear their feedback on how the program is operating, how their businesses are operating under the program, and to take from them suggestions, I'll call it, or input on how they may like to see the program change to improve their businesses, and also the overall functioning in the city. City staff as well, Mr. Feinstein, given his background administering this program over the last several years, has also provided input on ways we could potentially administer the program better because of his experiences. I mentioned earlier that we do have an economic development opportunity as well related to a cannabis manufacturing business that will require some input and guidance tonight from the council and maybe further council action in future. And I want to note too that, as some of you may be aware, several months ago, the federal government announced they are considering changing the schedule for marijuana. Right now, marijuana is a Schedule I drug, which imposes significant limitations on how cannabis businesses can operate in the United States. One of the biggest limitations, for example, is that they cannot bank at federally insured banking institutions, which most of our banks are. So, imagine if you're trying to run a business and you can't access capital in the same way, or provide your payroll services in the same way other businesses can. There's also interstate commerce restrictions that these businesses currently face. That administrative change by the federal government could create a fundamental shift in how these businesses, both in the retail, but particularly in the manufacturing sector and distribution and other ways, operate in future. So, we want to be able to begin to make some adjustments to the code with your, with your direction that will better position Fairfield should there be further opportunities in future. So, I have a series of questions for you this evening around these issues. I'd like to walk through them each one by one. I do want to note before we move into the questions, the first question is of four parts, but essentially it all ties to this issue of what a preliminary approval is and certain actions around a preliminary approval. Right now, our code doesn't address a preliminary approval in the same way it does once you've, when you've applied for something, or when you're already permitted. And in deference to our city attorney, I will note that the staff recommendations that you were provided ahead of time do differ from his guidance on this. Their recommendation from our city attorney was to reopen the application process, particularly for the manufacturing permit, as we'll talk about in greater detail. Staff is recommending making changes to the code. We've narrowed the focus of how we would approach that from our initial conversations with the city attorney's office. So, with that, I move to the questions, if I may.
Yes, sir. And before we move forward, let me say that I am going to, out of an abundance of caution, I am going to recuse myself from this discussion, although there's no action being taken at this time. I received a campaign contribution from a commercial cannabis establishment, so out of an abundance of caution, and to avoid any even appearance of impropriety, I am going to recuse myself and ask Councilmember Vaccaro to run this section of the meeting, if you don't mind. I think that Councilmember Tonason as well will make a statement.
Yeah, I'm going to recuse myself for the same reasons.
Okay, all right. You got it, Rick.
Do we have a quorum?
Yes.
One, two, three, four. Yep.
Okay. Okay. Actually, since I'm running the, running this, I'll start. I have a question, okay? Okay, first of all, so, question one, the city council may give the city manager further authorization, further promulgation of regulations. Okay, da-da-da. So, basically, what I'm, my question would be about the timeline, okay? I had brought up the case where we do have, there was a company that was issued cannabis license who was not operating. And, you know, I was, my question was, how can we remove that license? Because I really don't want to see any more dispensaries in our city, okay? And that, and that company never did open. So, with this, if we were to have, like, a new, would it be a resolution to Mr. City Manager to come back, or how would that be?
Yeah, I can answer that. So, what we would propose-
Or procedures, I guess, right? Okay.
Yeah, there's a couple ways. So, as we said, question one is really about, and it's in four parts, because as we said originally, when we talked to our city attorney, we looked at this section of the code and said, well, what if council just passed a resolution that just opened wide, right, that the city manager could do anything, and, you know, in, through consultation with our city attorney. Feeling was, well, that's pretty broad.
Right.
Maybe a little too broad. You know, you guys might go crazy now, but he could go really crazy, right, on whatever he wanted to do. So, we came back and narrowed it down into these four parts. There's a couple ways to look at this. One, you could, you could give us direction, come up with a resolution that would allow for a change of the code that would specifically say the city manager may promulgate these rules for these specific instances. Option two is to say, we will amend the code and insert or add in rules and new language in the code, likely in many of these cases mirroring the same language and rules as we have in, for what you would do with a permit. So, how would we revoke a permit? How we transfer a permit? Because right now, we don't have any language in there for these preliminary approvals. That's probably what I call sort of middle pathway to, you know, to do that. Timeline-wise, what we would aim to do is come back to you with the, depending on the direction, of course, at the first meeting in October.
Okay.
For the initial, for your, for hearing, and then your initial approval. So, we are looking to, and I can expand a little more on this too, in terms of the economic development opportunity, which is part of this as well, to work with, work through your direction to address these issues, and at the same time negotiate the potential economic development package to bring back to you for approval in December.
Yeah, and thank you, Dave. Great explanation of, I think, where, you know, we're recommending you end up, which is, you know, to amend the code, putting in place some specific provisions. And I think just to kind of expand on what, what Dave's saying is, right now, you have two commercial cannabis conditional licenses, and I might be using the wrong phraseology, but you essentially have two, one retailer, one manufacturer, that the city council awarded after the application process, that have not proceeded to meet all of the conditions that they needed to meet, which, once, once a company had met those conditions, then the city manager, under the code, shall, right, it's not a may, it's a shall, then issued them their permit. So, you have two conditional licenses that haven't met the conditions in order to get the final permit. And so, this is really a question of how do you want to deal with that. And so, I think, Councilman Vaccaro, your question that you raised, and is a major part of why we're back here, you know, a couple months ago, was as we come up with what that process might look like, to where for the, for the companies that have proceeded to meet those conditions and are now operating, which is three retail, commercial cannabis operations, under a valid permit, the code has provisions that allows a business with a permit that's operating to transfer. There's just- There's just no provision that allows for a conditional license to, to transfer. And so we, as a discussion and, you know, really seeking your direction, if the council so desires, to put in some form of specific timeline by which, you know, companies that have been offered, that have a conditional license at this time, if you want to then put in conditions that say, hey, here's how long you have to do that, you know, to, to meet those conditions, I believe that's something that we would, we would look at bringing back to you.
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah, I think that's good. My only issue is that there's a company that's been out there for two years and hasn't done anything. So if we had a timeline, how long would that timeline be to just give them more time? I mean, I don't, I think they've had enough time.
To be clear, you have two companies that are out there that have not proceeded on the timeline.
You're right.
One manufacturer and one retailer.
You're right. I'm talking about the dispensary. Okay. You're right. And there's the other one. Okay. But so that would come back in October?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And my final question would be, so these licenses, they're temporary or preliminary? They're out there now, are they permanent?
So the code right now, because there's no, there's no timeline in the code to say, you have so much time to transition from a preliminary approval to a permanent operating But it also doesn't say that these last forever, right? There's, we're in an area where it's undefined. And so we want to bring that specificity to the code by addressing this gap with the preliminary approvals.
So that'll be addressed too?
Yeah, that's, that is the intent, absolutely.
Okay. Any other questions here, guys? Question?
So, just that I understand, so there's, we're just talking about this one manufacturing permit, just this one.
We're talking about everything.
No, what, what we're, what we're talking about is very specifically, under, under 10 E of the municipal code, there is preliminary conditional licenses that have been issued, one retailer, one manufacturer. Those licenses, as Dave's pointing out, effectively, there is no timeline that they have in order to perform. So the council, in setting up the code, decided that you wanted to issue four retail licenses and one manufacturing license and an unlimited number of laboratory testing licenses. There were no applications for the laboratory testing. You had, I want to say 13 or 14 applications for the retail and one application for manufacturing. So because these two preliminary licenses are sitting out there, one retail, one manufacturing, from a staff perspective administering the program, what we're trying to raise is, hey, you have this limbo, and, you know, Councilman Vaccaro had raised this previously, you know, I think saying, hey, what's going on with these businesses, right? They've applied, they've been awarded this preliminary license, and then they've done nothing in order to proceed towards getting their, their permit by meeting all of our conditions. So the whole conversation, we're looking for from, you know, you on direction on, as we walk through the questions that Dave's got, is how do you want us to then frame dealing with these two preliminary? Because effectively from, you know, as he, as Dave said, from an economic development perspective, there's, there's business licenses for cannabis operators that are sitting on the table right now being unused. And, and we want to figure out, how are we supposed to administer that? And that's where there's this gap in the code that really doesn't deal with it until a business proceeds to meeting all the conditions to get their permit.
Or revoke it.
What's that?
Or revoke it.
Or, or revoke, again, that's, how do we want to deal with those is the question? And there's no, there's nothing in the code that makes that clear of how to deal with that. And so we're looking for direction on what are the parameters in which the council wants to deal with that, and then we can come back with an ordinance that would amend the code in order to put in place those procedures.
So for me, you know, I remember when we went over, you know, budgets and saw that, you know, we were anticipating a certain amount in, in revenue, and there was kind of a gap there. So for me, you know, part of discussion, I, I would like to, to see us move forward to amend this and kind of get, get this going.
Okay. Doris?
I think, you know, I agree. I think it's economic development, it's businesses, there's no business happening. My other, I think, and I don't know if this would have, this would be included in the, in the amended, in the conditions, with regards, because I know with, when a business license, when they aren't doing well, they're not doing something according to the conditions or to like the rules, the regulations or ordinances, we, you know, they come in and there's a whole process for us to take away the license. So would that be a part of this? Like, how does that license get taken away, per se? I don't know, quote unquote, taken away or removed? Is that part of this?
That's where there's this, I'll call it a loophole in our code. Because if a can, a commercial cannabis business was awarded a conditional license but then never met the conditions to even get the permit, then all of these provisions on how we enforce our cannabis regulations don't really apply, because they're effectively not an operating business. That's where there's this gap in our code that, that we're looking to you on, do we want to address that to allow transfer, to allow timeframes for performance, to allow in any, any host of things that then help us to understand, here's how we now can, you know, enforce the code on, on a provisional license where we have two sitting out there.
Okay. Councilman Carr, any comment?
No, I don't.
Okay, so if we, so if we give direction to, so it comes back where we address these loopholes, okay, and there's something in there where we kind of, at some point, revoke the license? Because like, I'm going to say it again, I said it before, I don't want to see any more dispensaries. You know, there was obviously an issue with one of them not opening, and now the manufacturing too. And I know we have an opportunity, hopefully, you know, hopefully for something else, but, okay. So that's what would be my direction, to bring it, so you guys can bring it back first meeting in October.
Okay. I mean, I can walk through each section, each particular part of question one, but it sounds like you've answered essentially for us to bring back to you amendments to the code that would address these four individual issues specifically in the code rather than giving the city manager the, the authority to do that.
And also the permanent licenses, I'd like to know about that, if that's going to be in there.
Say that again?
The permanent license, right.
That, that's already in the code. So once, once a business was permitted, then to Councilmember Panduro's question, there are regulations, like a business license, for example, to where if they're not, if they're not abiding by what the code requirements are, then yes, the city could revoke that, you know, revoke their permit. It's, it's these conditional licenses that, it's mum, right? The code is mum on revoking or transferring an operating business under an operating permit. There's code provisions that allow them to transfer. There's, there's, allows us to revoke if they're not following the requirements of the code. But a conditional license, there, there's no regulations on how those are to be dealt with.
And Councilmember Vaccaro, if I may jump in, part of the things that we talked about with staff as a city attorney team, just so that we're all clear, is under 10 E.8, under the application procedures and requirements, the last subsection C gives the city the right to reject any or all applications. And then there's some language in there that says, prior to permit issuance, the city may modify, postpone, or cancel any request for applications. You could have read that, that, that allows the council the authority to pull a permit before the permit has been issued, sort of in that gray area.
Right.
But we've recommended to staff that that's kind of vague because it is in the application process, so it's unclear, and we worried that you would get a challenge if you tried to pull someone's tentative permit while they're going through the steps. They would say, well, no, 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 this only applied during the application process.
Okay.
And so that's why I think staff is coming saying, you know, we want to, and the direction it sounds like you're giving is to clean up the ordinance a little. Because I don't think every, anyone ever envisioned, as Mr. Gasaway said, what happens if they get a tentative permit approval or application approval, but then don't take steps to actually solidify the permit.
Okay. Well, I think you have your direction, so.
Basically, we just, the language, we want to clean it up. Yes.
All right.
All right, well, then we will skip a few slides and move on to question two. Question two is based on feedback that we received from the stakeholders, some of the currently operating and permitted businesses, as well as some discussions internally amongst city staff, particularly those that are involved in city events. Right now, the city's policy for naming city facilities, donations, sponsorships, and capital campaigns does not allow businesses that substantially derive their income from several activities, including cannabis products or alcohol, from being a sponsor. And so the question to council is, are you open to potential amendments to that policy that would allow for these sponsorships, whether unrestricted or perhaps with some restriction or considerations that you would direct staff to take into account? We would then, based on your direction tonight, take, to prepare new language for the policy and bring it to you for your approval.
Question? Question? Okay. Doris? Okay. Okay. So this is just, so this would be just an amendment to, okay, policy for naming city facilities. I, I think, go ahead, I think I-
Currently, do we allow it?
No, right now, the policy, it bars companies that substantially derive their income from several activities, including cannabis products and alcohol, for example, from participating in naming rights, donations, and sponsorships as related to city activities and facilities.
Okay. I, I, everybody knows what I do for a living, okay? When it comes to these subjects, so. But I think that it could go forward with some limited application.
I would agree.
I agree. And I wanted to, so at the very bottom where you just read, the council reduced restrictions on businesses engaged in the brewing distilling, so right now, we currently do not allow these types either to give-
Yeah, and, and I added alcohol in there, and I mentioned as well in, in the documentation, because as you, you all know, we have a very large facility on the western edge of our town that is engaged in that, that business. It has been for almost 50 years, by the way. We'll get to celebrate their 50th anniversary in two years. So that's a consideration as well, we could address. And, you know, Sassoon Valley with, with the wineries and distilleries now, it's, you know, obviously, you know, we want to be respectful still. As I said, you know, there may be certain events where, or certain types of city events or, you know, activities where you say, that's not quite right yet for that, or, you know, maybe has a focus that isn't appropriate, but at the same time, it is an opportunity. We do have some, some businesses, as I said, we've received stakeholder feedback from the operating retail cannabis dispensaries and from staff discussion as well. We recognize this is a potentially resources, more so on that alcohol side in particular that could benefit city events.
I would be open to amending the policy.
I would be, I would also be open to amending it as well, but where I get concerned is when the restrictions, restrictions will still apply, like really what that looks like. But, but Dave, you really did a great job at articulating what I was thinking when you were talking about alcohol, not only, you know, Budweiser, not only, you know, our specialized breweries and our coveted, you know, Sassoon Valley. I mean, I don't know, I feel like it is time to, to, to consider these things, but when we say restrictions, but don't break down what that restrictions look like, I mean, are we looking for you to come back and tell and give us some just suggestions?
We can do that, certainly. One thing I would throw out from discussions at the senior leadership team level, you know, for example, do we want to be mindful of events that are more family focused, that we maybe wouldn't want to have a sponsor that, that, you know, that substantially derives their income from cannabis or alcohol? The, the tree lighting, for example, right? That's a certain kinds of events. So maybe things like that. Whereas something like tomato and vine, since vine's in the name of it, I mean, that's a different commerce.
Like Little League baseball or something like that.
Yeah, so, yeah, I mean, I think that's where, we, we, let us, I think what I'm hearing is, let us prepare something and we can come back to you. And I would include in that, particularly my, my colleague is the director, the director of Parks and Recreation in that conversation, because the events being in their, in their wheelhouse. All right.
Number three.
Number three. So right now, under the section of code that deals with cannabis businesses, there are additional restrictions on their signage above and beyond what other businesses in the city are held to. Our question to you is, again, based on feedback from those businesses, would council consider changes to the code, essentially removing those above and beyond restrictions so that the cannabis businesses would operate with the same signage requirements and restrictions and rules and regulations as any other business in the city of Fairfield?
You would agree?
I would agree to that. That's fair business, fair business practice.
I just, I just had a question. Can you give an example of one of the restrictions that is above and beyond?
Let me turn to our expert on this, Mr. Feinstein, and I will allow him to answer that. We only have him for four more months, we want to get as much out of him as we can.
Good evening. Dave Feinstein, city's planning division manager. So as Mr. Zellers mentioned, our current regulations in Chapter 10 E do place additional restrictions on cannabis businesses as far as their signage, particularly, they are not allowed to have any logos, they are not allowed to mention any of the services or products that they offer, and they are not allowed to have any temporary signs or banners, you know, if they're having special events, things like that. Any other businesses in town, you can have logos, you can describe your products and services you offer, and you're allowed those temporary kinds of signs and banners through our, through our sign permitting program. So the question here is, should we continue to place special restrictions on cannabis businesses, or should we treat them as, as if they were any other business here in town?
I would agree with Councilman Carr. You know, I don't, I don't see why we need to do that, that restrictions. Councilman?
Restrictions.
Restrictions. Okay, so that's the direction.
All right, we will prepare that language for you as well then. And then the final question for you, and Dave stand by, since he right now oversees this process. Currently, any business that is permitted to operate, cannabis business, that is, is permitted to operate, they're, they go through an annual renewal process of that permit. As a question, if there's any council direction to change the code such that the frequency of renewal would be different. So for example, you may receive your permit and then go through an initial annual renewal and then maybe another annual renewal, and then there'd be some period of time, two years or three years between your next renewal, so on and so forth, as long as you remain in good standing. And again, we would prepare language and bring that back to you at a future meeting for your, for your approval.
Councilman Carr?
Yeah, again, fair practice. I mean, if they have a business license, they have a business license, and they should be treated like anybody else that has a business license.
I agree, but I have a question. Are there any other business categories that have this annual renewal?
Dave, why don't you talk about a little bit what that process entails?
Yeah, so to directly answer the question, as far as I'm aware, there are no other special categories of businesses that require any sort of an annual renewal other than a business license. And all of our businesses require an annual business license. But there's, there's no other categories where we have to go through some rigorous review of, are they meeting, are they continuing to meet all of the conditions of approval for their project, taking a look at the finances of the business, anything like that.
All right. Go ahead, Councilman.
So is the, I mean, I mean, I'm assuming the one-year renewal was primarily because it was such a new industry coming into town?
Right.
Yeah. When we set the regulations, there, you know, there's a lot more regulations placed on a cannabis business than on a typical business. And so I think out of an abundance of caution, when we were developing the regulations, we wanted to feel like we had as much control to deal with bad actors, things, you know, businesses that simply weren't complying with the requirements, things like that. But as we've now had multiple years of their operation, we see in general, things are moving very smoothly. You know, it becomes inefficient for staff to have to run through this process every year. We're looking to streamline that, if the council is so willing.
Sounds like everybody agrees. I just wanted to say, you know, I know I brought this up a while back, so thank you for bringing it back. I know it took a while. I know it took a while, but, you know, I talked to our city manager about it a few times, so thank you, Dave, thanks for the presentation too.
I will just ask if the council has any other items related to this they, they wanted to bring to our attention to staff?
Regarding cannabis?
Yep.
Neither?
All right, with that, then we will return to you, first meeting in October with some changes to the, the code, and we will also work on the policy changes you've directed. Thank you.
I do have two speakers. First, Joseph Joyce, and second, Tim Dowling. Oh, okay. Tim Dowling? So I'm just going to pull your card, Mr. Joyce.
I just have a comment about the, the idea of evening up the signage for these businesses, that there was an occasion several years ago where I was driving down Highway 80, and there was a large electronic billboard, and it was advertising pot in a big sign, and I called the city at that time and said, I think this is inappropriate, that this advertisement is, you know, representing Fairfield, and I still feel that way. I think cannabis is fine, you know, for, it's legal now, and, but I just think it's not the image that we want in Fairfield, and I think that the city council, in addition to helping businesses, also has to maintain an image of our city, and I think this is, you know, something to look for when you get your recommendations from the city, that what they're proposing isn't so open that they can put anything out, and I know in a lot of cities, they have like male, not male, but adult shops, and they have a lot of restrictions on them too, specifically to kind of maintain the image of the city and not have it, have it diminished. Okay, thank you.
Uh, no. Twenty-one.
Vice Mayor and Councilman.
Okay, item twenty-one, public hearing and resolution 2024-213 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, authorizing the city manager to execute a power purchase agreement with Onyx Development Group LLC for the provision and operation of a solar field at the Waterman Water Treatment Plant, and our presenter is Michael Heather, Assistant Director of Public Works Utilities.
Thank you. Good evening, Vice Mayor, Fairfield City Council members. The item before you tonight requests consideration, oh, let me get this on slideshow. Sorry about that. The item before you tonight requests consideration to reopen the public hearing and contemplate approval of a redesigned solar field under a solar power purchase agreement at Waterman Treatment Plant. However, before doing so, I'll supplement the staff, staff report with a few brief remarks and summary of our activities since the last council meeting held on June 4th. I'll conclude the presentation with recommendations and next steps. So tonight's presentation seeks to provide answers to three questions. First, outline what we've done since the last meeting on this topic held on June 4th. Second, I'll present the revised layout for the proposed solar array, which was shifted further down the hill toward the main portion of the water plant facilities, and finally, I'll summarize our next steps. So we conclude the June meeting with a set of tasks which I've summarized here. The primary task was to expand the completed biological resource survey on the treatment plant property. The reason for doing this was determine the possibility of shifting the arrays further down the hill toward the water plant facilities while avoiding any newly discovered biological resource areas, as well as balance our current operations with the potential for any future plant expansion. After revising the original solar array layout, we had to validate it with the biologist's findings before filing the notice of exemption with Solano County. We continued to conduct general and targeted public outreach by letting area residents know our intentions, and we've maintained our progress meetings between technical groups and the solar provider, because even though we don't have a contract, an approved contract yet, they've been working in good faith with the city. So just really quickly to reorient everyone with the plant's property location and the current site programming, the city's water treatment plant property occupies a parcel of approximately 55 acres and is surrounded by the Rancho, Castle Rock, and Round Hill subdivisions. The main portions of the water plant facilities occupy the southern and easterly portions of the parcel. So this slide is meant to show a graphical representation of the original 20 acres assembled by, assessed by the biologist, whose perimeter is shown by the alternating black and white line. As a reminder, the solid red line represents a creek protection boundary, the blue line represents drainage pass, and the dotted red lines are vegetated buffers. So the areas represented by the green diagonal lines are delineated as aquatic resources, so this is what we originally assessed. So this slide is, is meant to show a graphical representation of the expanded biological area that includes the original 20 plus an additional eight acres expanded to the south. The new perimeter assessed is shown by the solid dashed dotted line. The purpose of identifying these resource areas is that in order to preserve the statutory exemption of the California Environmental Quality Act, we must not build anything within the vegetated or aquatic resource areas. So I think it's best to go back to the site programming, so that you can see the scale between the revised layout relative to the rest of the treatment plant property and the facilities. So the original solar array layout had the entire solar field situated in the northern portion of the property, sandwiched between the northern property line and the road leading up to the Waterman Reservoir. The revised layout is represented by the yellow polygons that straddle the road leading up to the Waterman Reservoir. The revised layout was shifted further down the hill and intends to maximize solar production and thus potential energy savings over the life of the contract. So this is just a more detailed view as we zoom in and to show the revised layout, showing the panels shifted down the hill toward the plant facilities, as well as avoidance of the biological resource areas. So in summary, city staff recommends convening the public hearing to facilitate a decision to respond to any comments, if any, regarding the notice of exemption that was filed with Solano County on August 7th, and finally, we recommend adoption of the resolution including, included in the staff report. And with that, take any questions.
Thank you very much for a nice report. Do we have any public speakers on this item?
Madam Vice Mayor, do you want to open the public hearing first?
I have, oh, sorry. Oh, she needs to open the public hearing.
No, the Vice Mayor, you need to open.
Oh, okay, sorry. I opened the public hearing. Now, do we have any public speakers on this item?
Yes, Rudy Guzman, to be followed by Tim Dowling.
Thank you. Good evening, and welcome.
Thanks, um, well, I just got it in the mail, so I didn't really, wasn't able to kind of get a plan going, I mean, I wasn't aware where the new solar is going to be, just by the looks of it, it's, I guess it's a lot closer to my house. Is there any way we can reschedule this, so we can kind of have a better look at where this solar is going to be put? My concerns are the reflection, I get the majority of, I guess, reflection from the solar. Again, I wasn't prepared, I got, I just got a notice today on where it's going to be. I got my neighbor to call me today and say, hey, we got a meeting today, so I was like, who's the meeting? So, so the other, a couple neighbors couldn't make it today. Is there any way we can reschedule this until we look at?
The first question he asked was, he, he mentioned or made a comment that the solar panels are closer to his house. Mr. Guzman is on the point, I don't know if I can use my cursor here, he lives on Salashan Court.
Correct.
So the, he's on the point that, that, I guess I would call it the house closest to the northwest corner of the parcel that we own, so the, the arrays are shifted further down the hill. I don't see how they could be any closer to the house, we've shifted them actually further down the hill.
I guess it's kind of facing, it's starting to go up like this, correct?
The panels have to face south, so in order to maximize production of a solar array, it has to point away from Rancho Solano.
But it does move as the sun...
They articulate as the southern exposure of the sun, but ours are going to be fixed, as I recall, so they're going to be pointing south. The southern face, that's how you maximize production out of the solar field.
So they're going to be paint, facing south, there's no movement at all?
They're going to be canted towards the south.
So they will kind of, that's it, they're just stuck there, they don't kind of move a little bit?
You can do an articulated arm, but that costs more to, to design and build.
I still think, you, you still have, like, if you see the facility there, they have a bunch of roofs on top, it would affect nobody, they have plenty of room there, for some reason, they just won't even look at it. I have no idea why. I'm still worried about the value, I mean, it brings down the value of our properties, the reflection. I did the math, last time you guys said it was going to save $15 a month per person, it's actually $12 a year. It's the first year, so do that in 25 years, is it really worth it? $12 a year per person for the first year, and what, the second, third, they're not going to see it. I mean, is that enough to destroy our habitat, our, our land with this solar? It's not really saving anybody money.
Okay, your, your public comment time is up, and we will open this up for council discussion once we close the public hearing.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
The next speaker is Tim Dowling. Good evening, and welcome.
Well, thank you. I, I think the city did make an effort in their rearrangement of the panels to try and lower them on the hillside, and I think it's an improvement, but actually, it's more visible from my house than it is, was previously. But I still think that it's missing the important point, which is that it's still directly uprend of the largest portion of Rancho Solano, and just this weekend, there was a large fire out on Highway 12 near the Railroad Museum that burned 60 to 100 acres, and the fire department was there as quickly as possible and tried to control it, but that's how quickly these fires are burning, and we're in a different situation than we were previously. I calculated this out, my neighbor has 20 panels on their roof, and they have roughly 40 connections. This is going to be roughly 700 panels and 1,400 connections. If you try to imagine my children filling up water balloons and, with colored water, and they were going to have a party, I wouldn't let them put those on my white carpet in my living room, and if there were 1,400 of those, there's a lot bigger liability than when there's 40. So when we were trying to make a comparison earlier, some of the members of the council were saying, well, it's, you know, we don't hear about fires on roofs, but a roof is a fire retardant roof normally, unless it's shake, and if you dropped a spark or a match on a roof, you wouldn't expect the house to suddenly burst, but if you drop a match on any layer, area of grass in California now, at this time of year particularly, it will go up in flames immediately, and this area is, has a high wind content consistently blowing directly into Rancho Solano over the hill behind the solar panels. So I just don't think it's worth the risk. If you imagine 1,400 colored balloons sitting on my white carpet, only one of them has to fail to have a major problem in my house, and that's what we're talking about, one single connection failing on these solar panels upwind of Rancho would just be an absolute disaster, and I think that you really need to weigh that, whether this is the right solution, and it's particularly in light of the point that Mr. Guzman was making about the minimal savings for residents of Fairfield. It's just not enough money to justify the risk, and I think all installations need to really be reassessed, and the last thing I want to say is that the installation that they had out on Peabody is, is a kind of like a textbook example of how to install one of these. Oh.
That's your time for a public comment.
Okay, well, can I just finish this point? That this is a very different locale than that one. That one has, the winds would blow it off into farmland, and it could burn for days out there, by comparison with burning directly over a hill into Rancho.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other speakers on this item before I close the public hearing and bring it back for council discussion? It appears that there are no other speakers, so I will close the public hearing and bring it back for council discussion, colleagues.
Vice Mayor.
Councilmember Carr.
Yeah, thank you. Mike, so the trees, where, where are they going to be located again, that are going to be planted?
We wanted to plant trees in the northwest corner of the parcel. So in this slide here, we want to plant native oak trees, which actually add value to the habitat, so the trees would, in the northwest corner of the property, would seek to screen any of this, you know, from the view of the northwest corner. There's, there has been a request from Mr. Dowling for us to plant a tree, the, the original request is contained to a specific point that is just west of the proposed perimeter fencing in between a bare area that we use for, it's a yard for storage. One of the things you don't want to do when you plant trees around a solar field is, A, you don't want to encroach on the field itself, and then you don't want to encroach on production. So my response was, to the extent will we plant a tree, yes, to the extent it doesn't encroach on the proposed field or solar production, but we also look at line of sight. We're open from the standpoint, Mr., Mr. Dowling's on Lumina Court, so from the standpoint of line of sight, we can plant other trees that screen his view.
Councilmember Tonison.
I think we talked about this last time, fires and solar fields, that number was miniscule.
I think that, that anytime you have development in open space, or that is abutted against open space, there's risk. What we do at the plant is we follow the city's abatement plan, so the solar field is going to fall right under it, we're, we do mowing by a certain time of the year, all in conformance with the fire marshal and...
We're going to take precautions for that. And have you looked at other solar fields that are within neighborhoods? Do we have anything to compare this to that are throughout northern Cal or something similar to that, or is that anything that we might have looked at?
Well, from the standpoint of, to Mr. Dowling's point, you know, putting a megawatt and a half at a treatment plant to help defray costs, I mean, that's the model we're using.
And then how? Are these things going to reflect, going to have reflections?
Generally, you don't do glint glare studies unless you're around airports, there's FAA criteria upon which you, you are required to do glint glare, but we are going to do a glint glare study with a selection of, there's about two dozen to maybe three dozen homes in and around the area, so we're, we're doing that. We're not required to do it because we're not within an area of the FAA, but we are going to do that.
And then how's Mr. Guzman coming up with a dollar amount that we don't, is there, have we come up with a dollar amount?
I think as a, as a more comparable or apples to apples, rather than get down to the granular of like how much savings an individual account is going, because financially, when you look at the water bill, there's a fixed and a variable, and then when you even look at how we bill, so for example, the folks who live in pump zones pay surcharge for living in the pump zones. Folks who live in areas where what we call Zone One, where it's just gravity fed, there's no pump charge because they don't need a pump, but I personally live in Rancho, and my neighbors, we all pay a pump surcharge because we live in a pump zone. So when you start to, in my mind, when you look at how much we budget that goes out the door to PG&E, it's about a million to a million and a half, so from, from my perspective, as a duty to the ratepayers... So from, from my perspective, as a duty to the ratepayers, why wouldn't you do everything to contain cost? So doing projects like this help us contain cost. And if we can solidify or add certainty, the decision-making on what we're going to purchase and from the standpoint of kilowatts, why wouldn't you put a, an array together where you're buying power up to a certain megawatt before you go to PG&E?
So we don't know what the savings is going to be? The, the savings is more of the future, the, we're going to get use out of the solar array, or it's, or it's going to reduce or suppress what future cost would be?
It'll reduce, yeah, I'm sorry. It would reduce what we'd buy from the grid. So similar to the plant that we have here, when we run the plant here, anytime you're running the plant here, you're not buying power from the grid.
Yeah, the, the estimate for the water utility is around $9.9 million in savings of operating costs for the water treatment plant over the life of the lease.
That is going to be passed on to Fairfield.
Correct, correct.
Thank you.
Colleagues, council, yes, please.
Michael, can you speak a little bit to the continued outreach that you guys done since the last meeting?
Sure. We started in, in mid-July, we started working on the NOE. We worked on what I called good neighbor outreach. Probably towards the end of July, we sent direct mailers to 75 to 80 residents in and around. And I call those good neighbor notices because we, the folks in view of Rancho on Salashan and St. Andrews, there was a handful there. And then what we also did is look at the contiguous property owners to the south, and then we also went across the street, and now I'm talking on the Vista Grande side, all up into Lomita. So there was a couple direct mailers that we, and I'll, I'll show you the, we had a, a blurb and we had a picture of what the revised solar plan looked like as compared to the original plan. So that went out in a direct mailer. With the other kind of statutory requirement we fulfilled was, in the paper, we did four notices in the, for the statutory requirement, and we're really only, by state law, only required to do it once.
Councilmember Vacaro.
Yeah, a question about the fire question that came up. I know that area, there has been some, you know, small fires. Last year, there was actually a pretty decent sized fire, okay? And I know there's been evacuations in the past. Not necessarily, the fire wasn't in that area, but still. So, I mean, I, I know you said that, you know, there'd be, you know, mowing and everything and keeping, you know, making sure there's maintenance done. I guess my, my main concern is really, is the fire hazard, the fire issue. So I don't know if there's anything else you can address with that, Mike, but, or anybody.
I think from the standpoint, I think from the standpoint operationally, we treat our water treatment facilities along with all our remote facilities with the same level of urgency. We mow around our pump stations and all the rest of our city-owned facilities. And we do that in conformance with the Fire Marshal's direction.
Yeah, it's still, it's, I mean, it's still a concern now, so.
So, I, I mean, I, I don't think anybody could ever guarantee that there's no risk, but according to the International Insurance Rating Agency, Varisk, international data says that fewer than 1% of all solar systems catch fire.
And that's nationwide?
That's internationally.
International. May I ask a question to the fire, our acting fire chief over here? Sir, how many fire response calls do you get for solar?
Off the top of my head, I cannot recall of any. It's, it's that rare.
Colleagues, any other questions or comments? Councilmember Williams.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. A lot of my questions have been asked, except for, I'm glad you have the screen up here, Michael, because one of the things on my list was about, you know, shifting the solar plan, and you've done it. Here, looking at the monitor, you know, it looks substantial, it looks like, it looks like a big move, but could you tell, if you know, in, in feet, like, what was the shift? And is it a shift, because I, because I kind of looked at it from different angles, is it a shift up the hill?
No, it's further down.
Down.
Further down. Yeah, so the, in this picture here, the, on the easterly part of the, it's, it's not apparent that, because the 10 million gallon reservoir is actually blended into the hillside. So in the easterly part of the property, that is our reservoir. So the original was abutted, there's a road that leads up to the, the reservoir. And originally, we had sandwiched the several acres, I think it was around five, five, five and a half acres. We had sandwiched that between the road leading up to the reservoir and the northern property line. So in, in revising the layout, we've, we've taken and broken up the arrays and, and straddled the road leading up to the reservoir. Which is why you see the kind of the broken, the polygons.
Any additional comments or questions? Okay. You mentioned a glare study that you're going to, although you're not required to do a, perform a glare study, that you're going to do a glare study? Would a glare study, do you think the outcome of that study impact our decision on the propriety of this project?
I don't see it because when you're blending the array into the hills, and the arrays point away from the houses, we wouldn't want to directly point arrays at any of the houses.
And so you don't think it would be proper to do the glare study before we have the city council vote on this resolution?
I don't think, I don't think it's going to change anything. All's just going to confirm what we already know.
Which is?
The glare is not going to be a problem.
Okay. And do we know, have we done any research in terms of the impact or the prospective impact of this project on surrounding property values? Because one of the concerns I heard was a negative impact on property values if this project is completed. Wondering if you looked at that?
No, we did not. And, and what I would say to that is we have an industrial facility on city-owned land that's already, it's been there since the 70s. And the, what I would say is that the subdivision, the city has allowed encroachment onto an industrial facility in and around that circumscribes our water treatment plant. So the rays are, are mixed among the main portion of the plant facilities that have existed there since the 70s.
But it's existed there without these solar panels, right?
Correct.
Okay. All right, well, any other questions before we call this? All right, so I will entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2024 hyphen 213. I'll entertain a motion.
Hold, hold a second there.
Okay, councilmember, okay, was that the motion or the second?
Motion.
Okay, so I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Me. I like the project, I don't like the location. And that'll do it for item 21.
Madam Vice Mayor, I want to make, can I ask the clerk, did you get the vote, wrote as, a vote as 5-1?
5-1.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Item 22, public hearing.
22, public hearing and first reading and introduction of Ordinance 2024 dash 06 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield approving the Fifth Amendment to the amended and restated development agreement between the City of Fairfield and Cannon Station LLC regarding land in the train station-specific plan area. And our presenter is Miley Sheehan, Principal Planner.
Good evening, councilmembers. Everybody still with us tonight? I am Miley Sheehan, and I will present this last item. The amendment request this evening is for an agreement known as the Cannon Station Development Agreement. The agreement covers a large area of land within the train station-specific plan. On the screen here, you'll see that the yellow outline identifies the train station-specific plan, which generally speaking is in the northeast area of the city. On the screen, you can see here, you have Cement Hill Road that runs across Peabody Road out to Vanden Road, which goes up towards Vacaville. The agreement covers the majority of the area within the train station-specific plan. More specifically speaking, it covers the residential areas known as Planning Areas Four and Five, or better known as the One Lake Communities that have been under construction for the last couple of years. Additionally, it covers land on the east side of Vanden Road, which is slated for a future industrial park, and a portion of land within the city for the 50-acre Matt Garcia Community Park slated for the future as well, and surrounding open space. On the screen, just to identify the star there, that is the One Lake Development. The agreement was adopted by city council in July of 2011, and since then, it has been amended four times, starting in 2012. Tonight is the Fifth Amendment request. Cannon Station LLC is specifically requesting to amend a section of the agreement that has to do with CFDs, Community Facility Districts. So just giving a little bit of foundational information, a CFD is a special taxing district created to finance public infrastructure, such as roads, utilities, parks, and fire stations. The CFDs finance such projects through the issuance of municipal bonds that are then paid back by the taxes assessed on the properties within the district. The request tonight is to increase the maximum combined tax rate, so that includes the state's 1% property tax and all of the CFD special taxes within the area from 1.65 to 1.75. This request is because construction costs have been significantly more expensive than anticipated, and over time, those costs have just increased. The amount proposed was derived by Cannon Station LLC, working with their bond counsel, our bond counsel, and our finance director. Ultimately, it deter, it was determined that the increase of 0.1% would provide both the funding capabilities necessary to support the infrastructure out in the northeast, as well as ensure there's capacity in the future should any additional elected taxes be added to the area. Just as a quick example of how this tax increase could be felt by the property owners out there, currently, for every $100,000 of assessed property value, the homeowner is paying $1,650. The increase of that 0.1% would increase the amount to a $1,750, using these short, nice numbers. For comparison purposes, there are other areas within Fairfield that have approved tax totals to up to one point, or sorry, up to 2.1%. And so with that, staff is recommending that the council hold the public hearing and introduce the first reading of the ordinance to amend the development agreement.
Thank you very much for your report, very concise, very thorough, thank you. I will open the public hearing. Do we have any public speakers on this item?
No.
Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please come forward now. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and open it up for council discussion or entertain a motion to introduce Ordinance 2024 dash 06 for first reading. Councilmember Tonison.
You said by comparison, it's 2.1% compared to, or, compared to other new projects?
So there are other existing projects within the City of Fairfield that have a total combined tax rate that goes up to 2.1%.
Any other questions or comments, colleagues? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion at this time to introduce Ordinance 2024 hyphen 06. I have a motion?
Second.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think that we have come to the end of this meeting. Thank you all very much for hanging in there with us, and I'll adjourn until our September 3rd, 2024 meeting. Thank you, be safe, good night.